Let's do the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation in our government, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Hearing Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Road Commissioner Greenan.
Here.
Commissioner Ross is absent with prior notice. Member Thompson.
Here.
And Member Warner.
Present.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Okay, let's take a peek at the agenda. Late additions or deletions. It's okay with everybody, I would entertain a motion.
A move we accept the agenda as shown?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have an agenda. Okay, we've got a bunch of minutes in front of us. Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
And, um, why don't we take a few minutes just to take a peek at them? So we're at January 10th, this organization.
Yes, I'm ready to.
And then the draft of the regular minutes, and then we go back, um, August 16th and December 16th. Let's just take a few minutes.
We'll have to pause through all at once, and appreciate them being in front of us. Motion would be August 16th, December 13th, January 10th, or January 10th. So as whoever makes the motion would include those dates, minutes of those dates for approval,
and then a second, and then we could discuss after that point. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from Wednesday, August 16th, Wednesday, December 13th, Wednesday, January 10th, for the organizational meeting, and Wednesday, January 10th, for the regular dam meeting.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Here's our opportunity for discussion. Take a, kind of a quick second look at the draft of the 10th. Allison put that together, and she didn't do a final, final proof. And would like us to take a close look, and if we've got something that we need to have her adjust, we can always modify the motion. Okay, hearing, no discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have approval of the minutes. Thanks again, Allison. Okay. We, it all gets us down to public comment. John, I like the hat. I almost put mine on, it's exactly like that this morning. It was a cold morning.
My name is John Copeland, and I create that comment. I'll try to give it real quick. This has to do with procedures again. Uh, you know, there's over a thousand riparians, and they appreciate the work that the dam authority is doing, but one of the duties of the dam authority is to maintain the lake level properly, not to maintain the dams. And I think there's a constant need for improvement, and I think we all do. You guys passed a motion to establish, I think the motion said manual, but that manual can have the procedure in it. But these sensors were purchased, and Steve was on board, these sensors was purchased and given to the county so that we had a better tool to use when we want to maintain the lake level. That court order said where to read it, but it also is pretty elaborate saying what you have to do to maintain it. And these sensors are available for anyone to look at. There's a website out there, and it's the most used website that we have for someone to look at. That's how interested they are. Uh, and when you can look at that and see, and this isn't picking on Jerry, but when these lake levels stay high for days and weeks, that's, that's just unacceptable. We need more action on that. And Jerry can't do it all themselves, but we've got the tools out there. Uh, the procedure that you guys are going to develop shouldn't have to take months for whoever to write one. Rick can write one. In a matter of a day or two, someone can review it, committee look it over, and then approve it. What does it take on this procedure? You've got a draft of what you want to, what you want to do at the dam, but we're going to maintain this level, at the top or the bottom of the thing. Put it at the top, it doesn't leave a cushion, and that should be in the procedure. Someone needs to look at it all the time, check the levels on it, calibrate it, who does this, who does that? You can't wait months to do this kind of stuff. I think you need to capture all this equipment and stuff, not equipment, policies and stuff. Make sure we're in compliance, write a procedure on how to maintain it, because there's a lot of citizens that's unhappy with just the stuff going on, especially during long events. And it can't take a half year to do this, and that speech, convert it all from a new book. Did I say out the name was John Copeland?
Got it.
Thanks, John.
I'm here to help.
All right, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, it gets us to action items. Lake, we're in all Lake Association, and I did chat with Nancy and text and whatnot. I did send her the rough version of the hydraulics page and the procedure page. Um, and the president, and the president, put your hearing names in, John.
Yes.
Oh, good. Um, sorry. So, and the president of, um, the association, Doug Onit, tell me his name.
Are you asking a question?
Nancy. Nancy's the president? I think so. Oh, and the gentleman that was here last time that's interfacing.
Well, that was a doctor, he's on, he's on this committee event I'm on.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anyway, I see she's not here, it's been tougher to get in here and make comment and whatnot, and I, I'm trying to keep her in the loop with regard to our, um, progress with regard to procedure. And you've got a new handout in front of you, um, that we can touch on, number five, I guess. I guess that's all I have for the association discussion, is that I'm trying to keep Nancy in the loop, and then maybe Rick, you can.
I had a conversation with Nancy about, um, trying to answer the question, do we want the staff gauge readings for the calibration to be on their website like they are on the Lake Man website? And the answer was, not yet. We may get a lot of questions from the riparians if we put all the data out there and we show that a particular electronic sensor isn't accurate for a period of time. Uh, I think after we fix some things, that may be acceptable to them, but she said just hold off at this time.
Thank you. I think that's wise. We all know that the sensors are, um, gradually working their way toward a more reliable setting as we've, you know, Rick's been in charge, and now he's interfacing with the Lake Association to assist this next season so we can get, um, add more data to Cal on the quiet days. So, um, that's going to allow Cal to adjust, allow us to adjust, and allow those sensors to come really close to the actual staff gauge reading in those locations, which will, um, cause our confidence in the sensor readings to be better and more justified than it is at this point. And it is a tool, and it's a useful tool. The, the real tool is the staff gauge and the real reading. Uh, the sensor reading can be variable. Did I hand out the last time with regard to the wind?
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know, Allison, if you got it, but this is from last time, and I think I showed it just. And you can be standing in the control room looking at the tube and watching the water go up and down in the tube even, just because of wind and pressure. So the sensors are good, they're a good tool, you just have to realize what on earth they're doing, and we're making them as good as we can. That, that's going to kind of take the place of the Lake Association presentation. And when Nancy gets here, I would imagine we'll be talking about where to set the dam for the summer season. And we haven't crossed that bridge yet, we're ways away from summer season, and we will have another meeting before summer season. And Allison, we should put that on the agenda for the next meeting, setting for summer season. Um, any other comments with regard to the category, Lake Law, Lake Association Discussion? Hearing none, we can move on. Two and three kind of go hand and glove. Uh, I kept two on there, I just wanted to reiterate that we had decided to go out and buy a cylinder at one point, and then we realized that, um, that could get in the way of a company that comes to redo the hydraulics and replace the seals, because that whole system has to work with the cylinder. So that company needs to buy that cylinder, even though they probably will buy the same one we were thinking of. We were getting the cart in front of the horse, and that was the discussion at last meeting. So that replacement of that cylinder and that whole concept will be carried out by the company that we hire. Design of power unit. We've been meeting on the committee side, um, and looking at two things, the procedure, number one, and number two, um, how to go about doing an EDS and getting a company to look at our system, do everything necessary to upgrade it for seals, and potentially redesign for what we want as how it's going to function. So, um, maybe I'll just, maybe get Garth to weigh in a little bit. Basically, it's been Garth and me and Jerry. John's been kibitzing a bit too, but maybe I'll let Garth take it.
Yeah, I, we've had, we had a, a long discussion with Don Coppins, and, um, received 13 pages of notes from him regarding the system, so it's a pretty extensive, um, review and, and information that he provided. And it wasn't complete, according to him, there was still a lot of holes to be filled in. What he did is he gave us a detailed specification for, um, the tank, essentially the tank that holds the hydraulic fluid.
Yeah, just one component.
One component, and in his notes, he said that you should do the, the similar, um, description and specifications for, of course, pumps, motors, cylinders, piping, electrical. So there was a lot of information that still needs to be filled out if we're going to put this out to bid to contractors to build, so they all are working off the same, um, the same design. So during our committee meeting, we discussed a couple options. One is to do it, a design build, essentially leave it up to the contractors. The other would be to prepare a full set of specifications with all the details in it, and let the contractors bid that. After, after the discussion, we're leaning towards the way of, um, having a full set of specifications prepared so everybody's bidding on the same thing. Uh, the concern was, if we, if you leave it up to a company, or the bidders to do a design build, you're going to get different quality and different, different types of systems. It's going to be much more difficult to review, to ensure that it's going to operate the way that we desire it to do. So I, I think.
Yeah, it could be apples and oranges.
It could be apples and oranges.
Rather, you know, it's the design build, if we went out with specs, okay, company, do the specs and do design build and give us what you got, which is just what Garth explained, it could be quite variable, and then how on earth could we choose? I mean, so.
Yeah, so, so the direction we ended up leaning is going out to retain a engineering company to write the specifications for the hydraulic system, all the detailed information. So, uh, anybody that's going to build the system will be proposing on identical systems.
I, I guess a question. Do I understand correctly that we want a, a dual system, so the, the new system can operate with either motor, either pump? I don't know about separate hydraulic fluid chambers, but so you have a redundant system where you can do maintenance on electric motor, pump, and cylinder while you're operating with the other half?
Yeah, but part of the specifications that we did get from Mr. Coppins included a, a quite detailed description of how that will operate, and, and in that, it's exactly as described, and either pump can be taken out of service, maintained while the, so the whole overall system remains in operation, running off one pump. So, um, it gives that added reliability that the system's designed to operate only on one pump while maintaining the other, or servicing the other pump.
Sure. Yeah, the, um, it's interesting, I know that, um, Jerry was concerned at one point, and Gary was down in the control room with him, and wanted to, um, see, you know, what if one of those motors stops? So what they did is they disconnected one of the motors, and they ran the gate down and ran the gate back up. And, um, the long and short of it was, it was a little slower, but it was very functional. So, um, and John, John remembers all kinds of stuff that I don't. John remembered that, um, that we had a correspondence with Thomas Perhoda, which is the engineer who designed the dam, and, uh, he dug it back out, and what Thomas was saying was, if we got to a 200-year event, a single cylinder might and probably wouldn't be able to lift the gate. So even though functionally during day in and day out, we can do this, during the extreme event, that might not function. So, um, we do have a, an upper limit there, um, that's kind of thrown into the mix, but it's good to know that the system, the way it is, is designed so one cylinder can function. Now, the caveat for going into the design is, that's all fine and good, but if we have part of the system that's not functional, we want to fix it and still be able to do the crest gate. So that'll be in, that'll be in our, um, RFP, uh, request for proposal that we'll have to put together, um, to go out to bids for a company to do this work. In between that, um, we need to find an engineer, engineering firm to write the specifications. So an executive document summary going in front of the board this next month that we'll present will be basically the request to go out to bids for this engineering firm. And that way, the board knows what we're doing. Deb, weigh in, please.
Thank you. I think that, um, the dam authority has a unique opportunity to assist the county on an issue that is, it's something that I recognize for the year and a half that I've been here, is, in the past, the board had approved going, establishing an RFP for a county engineer. And that's necessitated by the fact that we don't have an engineer on staff, and we've talked often, I know Johnny's a proponent of us having a facilities manager, um, we've talked about maybe even, um, an asset manager for the county from the standpoint of hiring an engineering firm or having someone on staff. We've looked at a lot of different options. There just hasn't been, I would say, an appetite with the board to move a position forward. However, I think that the dam authority has a unique opportunity with this request, because this is what happens, we find ourselves in a situation where we're not only having to bid out a project, but we're having to bid out an engineer to get a scope of work. And, um, what we see is the timeline that that creates, we can't move quickly, we can't be nimble, we can't be efficient, because we're finding ourselves in this process. So I would think that because of the expertise that's on this mission, and being able to maybe help the board understand, um, the challenges that are associated with this, perhaps a recommendation, not only the EDS that would need to go before the board, but also maybe, um, a letter of request or a letter of support to help the board to understand some of these issues and challenges that we face, not only structurally for the, for the facilities here, but for some of the things we manage, i.e. the dam. We need to be able to move quickly. So, um, again, I think an encouragement, a letter of, of support or request to.
And we've talked often, I know Johnny's a proponent of us having a facilities manager. We've talked about maybe even an asset manager for the county from the standpoint of hiring an engineering firm or having someone on staff. We've looked at a lot of different options. There just hasn't been, I would say, an appetite with the board to move a position forward. However, I think that the dam authority has a unique opportunity with this request because this is what happens. We find ourselves in a situation where we're not only having to bid out a project, but we're having to bid out an engineer to get a scope of work. And what we see is the timeline that that creates. We can't move quickly. We can't be nimble. We can't be efficient because we're finding ourselves in this process. So I would think that because of the expertise that's on this mission and being able to maybe help the board understand the challenges that are associated with this, perhaps a recommendation, not only the EDS that would need to go before the board, but also maybe a letter of request or a letter of support to help the board to understand some of these issues and challenges that we face, not only structurally for the, for the facilities here, but for some of the things we manage, i.e. the dam. We need to be able to move quickly. So again, I think an encouragement, a letter of support or a request to the board of commissioners to either consider, consider a facilities manager or at minimum then determining, as they have done in the past. So I think in 2017, Jerry is in that when we took the last decision to send out an RFP. And I think we had an arrangement with Machin. Since that time, there's new board members, new thoughts, new opinions about how we should do things and know history from the standpoint of why we did that, why we had the county establish an engineer. So would like some thought on that, would like some support and something that could go before the board to help them to understand the urgency in establishing either a relationship or a facilities management. No disrespect to Jerry, it's just we need someone at this point that has this engineering expertise for the county because we have a water treatment facility, we have the dam, we have the parks and recs, we have all these different things that need this level of, I think, overview, oversight.
A question for you. What, what disciplines should this engineering position or person have? A general industrial engineer?
I think that's where some of the insight can come from. I mean, obviously, a mechanical engineer probably has the best scope from the standpoint, but you know, where do you find a hydraulic engineer? Where do we find an electrical engineer, a mechanical engineer? You know, all of those different disciplines within engineering are something that we could benefit from. And I've even talked to firms about, you know, is there, as an intern, could you guys hire an intern and then have them represent the county? So I have thrown a lot of things out there. I've not gotten any traction with these. So that's why I was asking perhaps if the request comes from, you know, the dam authority saying, we're seeing that we need this level of expertise to be able to make these decisions such as maintenance updates or any of these things, to do a scope of work. We ran into the same situation. We don't have anyone on staff that has the ability to create a scope of work for a lot of different projects. So with an RFP, we can take the scope of work and send it to our legal counsel, but they're not experts in crafting the scope of work, which is, I think, what Garth said, you know, how complicated it is already on just one component. So just asking for assistance, direction, professional insight and something that could go to the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment on one-
Can you hold that for just for a second? So, so when the EDS, when I present that, I can also hand out a letter of request. That would be good timing. Okay.
One thing we did at the road commission this past year is we solicited qualifications for engineering services and we had both design engineering and construction engineering for roads. And even though they're similar, any company doesn't necessarily have the expertise in both areas. So maybe worth considering pre-qualifying, essentially pre-qualifying more than a single engineer or a single engineering company to be available, to be retained by the county to prepare specifications or design for whatever it is in particular. I'm not that close to the county to know everything they might have to do, but it might be a situation where you have to have more than a single engineer pre-qualified to work with the county.
I believe that was a similar process, but they actually narrowed it down even to the point of saying, you know, this will be our go-to engineer, which at the time was Machin. Their contract has expired and now we find ourselves that we don't have any process currently to expire the contract, the relationship. So I would value perhaps what the road commission went through as part of this process, but that directive would need to come from the board commissioners.
Yeah. So the long and short of it is Machin Engineering's been on board since 016 and that, that's been our go-to. You know, whenever we had a situation like this, we could, we could not go through the EDS procedure. We would reach out to Machin and get scope of work done and they would charge the county because they're under contract with the county. So they were set to do that and they, they did the pin shift, they did the design for the lockout in the, at the dam. Yeah. Yeah, they did a lot of design work for us just because they were sitting there and that was their job.
Just for clarification, EDS is an executive document summary. So that is a document that needs to go with any requests for funding to the board commissioners. But the RFP process, I think, is, that's where we find ourselves in this dilemma because we need to do an RFP to get an engineering firm an RFP to actually do the work. So just two different, two different documents, two.
Correct. And, and so we'll get, basically get permission from the board to go find an engineer and then the engineering company will most likely, you know, get, open up the bids and then we'll probably have to enter into a contract with that company. And that's got to go out to, we've got to choose it and then it goes out to corporate council to review the contract.
So we have to do two RFPs. You basically, one RFP is probably, I'd say, anywhere from a 60 to 90-day process. So now you're looking at basically six months before you can actually start to get the work done. So this is where I'm asking for this board to maybe say, we, we'd like the board to consider an option that would be more-
Timey.
One of the experiences that in my corporate life, we established in each manufacturing facility, a facilities engineer. Unfortunately, it took 15 or 20 years of experience in each of the facilities for that gentleman or lady to acquire the different disciplines that were necessary throughout just a manufacturing facility. I think to have a single engineer is probably just as complex for the county. So it's a challenge and you realistically need to bring in a young person where she or he can gain knowledge of the dam, of the parks, of the equipment that the county owns. It's not something where they're, they're an immediate fix for all the engineering questions, but over time, it becomes very valuable. They are well worth the money spent and certainly expedite repairs of and maintenance of all the equipment. I would be in favor of supporting a letter of recommendation or support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Does anyone have any other questions? Thank you.
So we did, we did some scribbling, I did some scribbling, we did some talking about what this might look like for the next board meeting. Basically, we're seeking to go out to bids for an engineer slash firm to write specifications and scope of work for an upgrade of our hydraulic system at the dam. Budget amount zero, contracted amount zero. For dam authority, I requested $86,000. That included the walkway and the roof repair. And I'm pretty sure, I didn't print it, but I think they put 10 in, 10,000 in, with the understanding and realization that the things that we're looking at moving forward will obviously cost more than $10,000. So, so that's why zero and zero in budget and amount, contracted amount. We were kind of guestimating, you know, what would it cost to get an engineering firm or an engineer to put this together? And John was scribbling numbers down and Garth was looking at numbers on his side and I was nodding and somewhere between maybe 15,000, maybe, and I said, well, not probably less than 20,000 and it could be as low as 10 or maybe even less than that. Let's say if Machin would happen to bid, he's been in the control room, which is another advantage of having a firm on board. He's been in that control room with a laser system that has every square millimeter of that interior on paper and in-house. So, and he's, he did the lockout, so we're going to make sure that he knows we're looking for this because that firm is in position to turn the crank instantly.
All right. I'm not sure if these are even on, but, oh, thank you. So another option that this group has is to also request that the board consider waiving the bid policy on this process because of the relationship that Machin's had. So that could be a request if this authority is stating that there's a sense of urgency, a sense of emergency or potential concern, you know, for the safety of this, to move this forward because of the time component, you know, that, that is a legitimate request that this group could make regarding this in a letter saying that, you know, that the authority would like to request that the board waive its bid policy to contract with Machin because they have a historical knowledge of the facility. They may consider expediting that. I mean, this is, you all are the experts and so know that you have the ability to request that of the board, to be able to set that forward. So if that is the thought process, that they have the expertise and the ability to expedite this, to move forward within the actual ability to do the scope of work and get that out there, you have that right in that ability.
I like that. I think that, that would be our move. I guess I would entertain a motion.
Can I make a comment first?
Oh, well, sure, we can.
I just remember when Coppins was here, I recall him saying it would be most typical to get the specs directly from the companies that were bidding on the project. And that would be a highly typical way for things to move forward. So is there potential that there's a step there? I understand you could be getting different things from different folks, but you would imagine that they would be presenting why their differences are there.
Yeah, this fits with that. Scope of work is just a generalization of what we want. It doesn't get down to the nitty-gritty.
To that level of detail.
Yeah, it doesn't get down to, this is what we are proposing to do. It's a, it gives us a similar scope of work to tell people this is what we want. So it's, it's the step before the nitty-gritty. So I don't think it gets in the wake. Garth, is that your take? I don't know if I understood the question just exactly.
Yeah. I mean, it sort of goes back to our discussions, you know, do we want them to do a design build? Do we want to?
That's what I was referring to, yes.
Yeah. How detailed the specifications do we want to give them to do the construction? We have to have some consistency in what we give the contractors so they know specifically what they do, should be doing in the, in their proposals. I understand what you're saying. I guess I don't have a-
We just probably lack the expertise to-
To get to that point.
To get that scope-
Yeah.
-detailed enough. Okay.
Yeah, that's what we started with. We, we, Garth put together a nice, you know, that's one of the sheets you got, you know, quite obviously, this is pretty darn close to scope of work, but we were struggling with what else is needed to give these companies enough to work with to get back to us kind of thing.
Is there any type of concept on how many companies you think might bid? Is there a rough idea? Do you think it's one or two? Do you think it's five?
Don, Don, it wasn't in this group pages. The previous correspondence with Don, basically, we've met twice, twice, once in person and once on the phone. And he has followed up with written what he said in person, just written out. And in the first group, there were like five companies that he listed that are Michigan based, at least, you know, have an office in Michigan and they, they do this kind of work. And one of the, the first one on the list was the company that did our work when we put the dam in. So that, in my mind, I thought that was good news. And so we have a shortlist to make sure that they know that we went out to bids.
Got it, okay.
And, and that's from Don. So anyway, I entertain a motion for me to go in front of the board with an EDS for putting together a scope of work and write specifications for us to be able to go out to bids to get our hydraulic system for the dam upgraded and also check the box, request to waive bids and request hiring Machin Engineering for the specific reason they've done the work for the lockout. They've done all of our work for engineering for the control room recently and they've been in that room with their laser system. So every square millimeter, every millimeter is already in-house for them. It's already in CAD. It's already set for them to turn the crank and be able to get the scope of work out for us.
Now, Mr. Chairman, could you add to that proposed motion also to expedite the work to be done? Because I think it's important that we get this done in an expedited manner. There's, I think we can go out to bids and, okay, I'll add that plus- and go out to bids with that. With that scope of work. And I think that, that should flow. We should be able to go ahead, move right through on that. Make a quick, John, what's coming?
I, I'm thinking about that motion, Steve, of, of not just limiting yourself to Machin. When we talked about it at the, thinking about it, I says, what if we went and called Machin? I'm not sure Pat can do hydraulics.
This is just to get the scope of work.
Well, I know-
And then we're going out to bids for the hydraulic.
You're right, Steve. But if I was Machin and you said, hey, I'll go with you, I said, I can't do the scope of work. I don't have anybody on my staff that can do it. So if you could word this motion that to investigate in going out, blah, 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 you might find out that you want to go with Machin, but you also might find out that you found Rusty has a guy on board to write that scope, which goes in your line saying go out for bids, but don't limit yourself to just Machin to use them as a sole source. Somehow word that, if necessary. I think what you did, you said, we're going to get approval from the board so we can talk to Pat Machin. I think that's what you wanted to do today. We have authorization for someone to call Pat and say, Pat, do you have the staff to do this? If you do, we'd like to know.
Yeah, I, at this point in time, I appreciate that. Yeah, I, at this point in time, I appreciate that. Appreciate the comment. Yeah, I, it's hard to imagine that machine engineering couldn't put together a scope of work at just gut level. I don't know. What do you, what's your take, guys?
I assume it's, they have the capability, but I don't know.
I don't have enough prior knowledge of them to be able to comment on that.
Nor do I. So, and I think John's comment is that we're repeating ourselves into a corner by approaching the board for this, and it's a two-step process. It's the day meeting, the night meeting, that's all week. But I guess, I guess what I could do is I could call Pat machine. And so, if the motion is to, all of it's the same, and I check the box, waive the bid process if Pat machine says, sure, I can put that together. There. Thank you, John. Thank you, Deb. It sound good? And then, plus, craft a letter of request to have the county hire an engineering firm.
Can we say so moved?
It would be helpful if maybe you would go back over it just so I can...
Tune it? Okay.
Fine tune your wording. It would be great.
Okay.
You want to put the EDS together to take it in front of the board in March, correct?
Move to have Stephen committee put the EDS together, seeking to go out to bids for an engineering firm to write specifications and scope of work to upgrade the hydraulic system at the dam. And if appropriate, check the box, request to waive board policy for bid requirements if and only if machine engineering is capable of doing that work. Plus, craft a letter of support for the request of hiring an engineering firm for the county for just this purpose. No, overall purpose. Yeah.
If that's the whole motion that you would like to have?
I think we covered the bases. So moved is appropriate.
So moved.
A second. Now, we can chop it up with some discussion. Or if not, I'll call the question.
One question.
Shoot.
Is there a reason to use the current equipment or to suggest to the engineer that puts this specification together that we retain, utilize any of the existing equipment if appropriate?
I think that's a good call. You know, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel. This thing's been working for 20 years.
Yeah. I think that's something that could be in the scope. When we get the scope written, make it known to machine, if they write the scope, that if there are components of the system that can be reused or utilized in the new system, that they do so.
I envision the committee meeting as appropriately. After my conversation with machine engineering and we go to the board, it allows us to hire machine engineering into the scope, then I think the committee can meet, have Pat in the room or on the phone and hammer out where we go with the scope. We have a list of specifics that we want and he'll be able to, Kivitz in on all the different aspects of it. He's been in the room, he's seen it, he knows it. So, we can get our scope fleshed out and obviously, we don't want to throw anything away that we could possibly keep. You know, we just, this is the point of decision. Obviously, those cylinders can be rebuilt. So, we buy one more cylinder and we have three cylinders. That's a perfect scenario in my mind. The rest of the machine, we know that, from Don, we know that the pumps are obsolete. And then, so, and then from Don, the gaskets, the seals on the pump motor as it interfaces with the pump itself, there's wear on the shaft. So, even if you replaced the seal, you'd have a wear point. So, you know, once you start, okay, we need pumps and we need motors, and then we want to be able to repair it on the fly, so now you're talking a different tape configuration, probably, if it's separate tapes, that might be the easiest, I don't know, or maybe not. So, then, once you start going that, down that path, okay, what's left? And if we tear it all apart and replace valves and seals and put it all back together, how close are we to just doing it all new? I don't know. Good question and good point, and I, yeah, we'll definitely bring that down when we're talking about, assuming we get to that point, I think.
I have one last question.
Shoot, I love it.
Do we need a warranty on the system after it's rebuilt?
Don was talking a little bit, do you, does any, do you remember what Don was saying? There's a, number one, he wanted, okay, I want that thing put together and I want to come look at it, was his comment, you know, not just, not have the first go be in the control room. He wanted the first go to be down in your shop. Yeah, I, I think I recall that there would be a warranty on it and I don't know the timeframe, whether it was a year or some other time period, but yes, we should have one. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we've got a, we've got a procedure. So, what I'll do is get the committee together here before too long and make sure this can get written. I might go ahead and write it down, email it out, and see if we can do it that way rather than coming together. Okay, it gets us to sensors and staff gauges. And I did, you've got the printout of what the sensors looked like just before the meeting. But anyway, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to go over a number of things. Dwayne Flaska and John Popa and I got together on February 14th to look at the dam staff gauge, to compare the reading in the control room of the tube, the staff gauge and the electronic sensor. And let me run through this real quickly. Basically, what we did, we read the staff gauge, the water tube, and the staff gauge was very difficult to read because of the scum that's built up on it. We tried to clean that as best we could, made a measurement, and the readings, we raised the dam to zero flow. And 30 minutes later, and we, we'd looked at the electronic gauge and the water tube in the control room, the level came up, we got to 588.40 feet. And that was from 588.08 on the staff gauge, 588.012 feet on the water tube. The, there was a bit of a surge as the water built up at the dam, and we waited a little longer, another few minutes, at 12:20 PM, it's, the water tube came back down to 588.30 feet. So, there was a wave, it stopped, and then we saw no change after that point. The benefit of trying to stop the flow and look at the level would teach us some things about the lake level, the sensors. So, by 12:20, 40 minutes after the gate closure, the surge wave ended, subsided. The water in the control room in the tube read 588.3, the electronic sensor, 588.3, and the staff gauge at the narrow read 588.3, the electronic sensor at the narrow is read 588.3. So, for all practical purposes, as best we could measure, after 40 minutes of no flow over the dam and stabilization, the lake was basically level from North Lake to the dam. Our conclusion is that the staff gauge, the electronic sensor, the sensor was reading correctly at that time. Something else that I went back to do at the bottom of this first page, I looked at the readings between the electronic sensor at the dam and the staff gauge. There were four measurements made over about two and a half months. The difference was, the average of that was just over a half inch difference. That's the electronic sensor versus the staff gauge. The staff gauge is closer to the dam than the electronic sensor by, I can't remember, 16 or 18 feet. So, the staff gauge may be reading some of the curl as the water starts to go over the dam. That half inch difference may just be the curl effect. Unfortunately, on the second page, unfortunately, the electronic sensor at the dam has had some erratic readings. And certainly, we can't explain them by the, we know the water level didn't go up and down like the staff gauge, or I'm sorry, the electronic sensor read. The South Lake readings continue to correlate with its staff gauge, the narrow readings, the few that we've had, the electronic gauge agrees with the staff gauge. At the dam, certainly after February 6th, we have seen some strange readings that make little sense. I'd like to have John Popa describe some of the information that he came across. I was out of town, John got involved, we talked about these erratic readings. John, could you help us with this?
We don't want to take a lot of time, but once we noticed those readings were erratic, which you see on some of those graphs, we got ahold of Cal and discussed what could be done. And he said, why don't you go out there, open up the cabinet, see what you see, and see where we have to go from there. Well, I bought some desiccant because he was wondering about desiccant. And opened the cabinet, it was sealed nice and tight, and done it, I didn't bring it, but I found the equalizing tube was busted off. Now, that shouldn't affect readings too much because all it does was takes atmospheric pressure and those things. But having the desiccant not being in there, possible moisture could be in there. So, I filled that cabinet full of desiccant, closed it up, brought that thing, and I said, I'll go down and check that gauge. And it looked like then that that wire was being pulled up and that gauge was being pulled up, and the elbow came out because of frost heat. So, we got a concern there to fix in the spring, but everything was okay. That cable that goes down to that sensor isn't bobbing up and down, there's no waves there. It's tight, it's a little higher than it should be, and that's not what's causing the surges. And Rick can go from there. I think he's got a request. So, I found a few little things wrong, but nothing like the pipe is dangling and weeds or anything like that, nothing came loose, and that's what we found.
The conclusion that I think we've come to, the sensor is not reading correctly. The system is, it certainly doesn't read correctly consistently, and the answer probably is to purchase a new unit. Cal had some information about what, which one to purchase, there are different prices. I think we'll watch this, this gauge over the next few weeks. If it settles down and just was a moisture issue, that would be one thing, but realistically, I think there's a problem. It probably needs to be replaced. John, any recommendation from Cal on how long we should observe it, or should we just go forward with a new?
Well, weather's terrible. I think there's a couple other things you and I could look at. You could disconnect that gauge and see if there's moss around it, zebra mussels, or anything that's causing the spike holes, the signs. And if you see that, that gauge sensor is okay, you move it up and down the tube, put it back in there again and see if it levels out, but he's still going to have to put something in that equalizing thing, and that only comes, I think you can snip it off and do it yourself, but I didn't play with it. But it'd be another peak. If you did snip it off, fill up with desiccant, screw it back on, play up and down with that tube and then recalibrate it and see if it works. You might save yourself $800. This is an older sensor, he's happy with some newer models. And I think all you're going to do is say, if necessary, we have the authorization for the rest of the period and we want it to function. That's all.
And the estimate, the estimate was $800 for a replacement?
Yeah, maybe he had a fancy one there for a thousand or something. Because he wasn't happy with these vendors. He does this on other lakes, and he knows that we don't. You guys had him contracted out, but I think all Rick is looking for is to proceed with replacing it, which is within the budget.
Do we need any kind of a requisition to approve $800 or to get an exact price and move forward with a replacement?
Well, I know that Cal can't do it right away, so it'd be...
No, it's not going to be done now.
It'd be, you know, yeah, when he gets back from Florida, that's when all this is going to happen.
Well, he might be able to order it, but I don't know when you guys are going to meet next. All you'd have to do is have a motion to...
Well, I think what we need is...
And after we look at it and see what's bad, Steve?
Let's, let's, let's get a recommendation from Cal. I was kind of looking at the emails back and forth with Cal, and there's, there's more than just the sensor. There's an upgrade that I think he's going to do, and I would like it to be $1 amount. And I don't want to have to meet and keep approving dollar amounts. I would like Cal to put together what it's going to cost us, not just for the sensor, but for the doing it and the, the other pieces that are going to be necessary for the upgrade. And we don't have to do it instantly. We see that our, our sensor at the dam is not functioning properly, so I, we're going to meet, we're going to have to meet relatively shortly, and then if we can continue the interface with Cal through Rick and John Kivitz, then, okay, Cal, what are we going to need here?
Let me get a quote from him for the different steps that may be necessary.
Yeah, there's going to, I think, I think there's going to be something else in the box that he's going to have to upgrade to.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing, but it seemed like that. And we'll, we'll have to have another meeting before too long here, and then we can, okay, then have a good number to work with.
That's it. That's it.
There were comments on the second page at the time. Did you do those and I missed them?
I went through it pretty quickly. I got down to number six. We probably need to purchase a new system eventually.
Oh, okay.
The graph below it just shows some of the erratic measurements that the sensor gave us.
So the long and the short of, let's say, the South Lake and the Narrows, the correlation between the readings and the staff gauge are...
Right on.
Right on. So we're confident. I know I've been doing some calcs, and it seems like steady state, if we're not having events, it's kind of like between events, South Lake is a little less than four inches different than the measurement at the dam. And at the Narrows, we're talking two inches or a little less than two inches different than the measurement at the dam. And I know historically, Jerry has always figured that the Narrows is two inches different than the dam, even, you know, with the staff gauge being goofy, he knew that. So, and that all makes sense, you know, the water's flowing downhill. And I was going to mention, Cal and his group have quite a bit of expertise on the Glen Lake Technical Committee. And they've been talking a fair amount about proximity to the dam and what is the flow and what should you be able to see as a differential, say, between our sensor, which is 20 feet upriver from the staff gauge. And I think we've correlated the tube with the staff gauge.
Those agree.
Correct. And we set it up that way. So in other words, we put the tube in and we got the staff gauge. We read the staff gauge and made the numbers on the tube correlate to the staff gauge. So is the actual level of the water in the tube different from the level of the water at the staff gauge? Maybe. But we, we made them the same. So that when we're looking at the tube, we're reading the staff gauge, which is what the court order told us to do.
In all the measurements that I have, the tube never deviates from the staff gauge. So that makes sense.
It does, yeah.
If you set the tube up to match it, it still does.
And it still does, yeah. Well, that's confidence level. I mean, the gut level, you'd say that that makes a lot of sense. This thing is solid, it's not going anywhere. And the staff gauge is pinned to the concrete wall, and that's not going anywhere. So unless the concrete wall moves or the, you know, unless we have some movement of the cement, though it should stay the same. Yeah. So that's good. And I appreciate that work.
I didn't know they were set up that way. So the test case, I mean, the measurements agreed without my having knowledge that that was how they were set up.
Yeah. So the difference between the sensor and the physical staff gauge on the wall would be, you know, when you converse with Cal, you can tell him, our sensor is this many feet from that wall, staff gauge. Would there be a difference because the water's flowing downhill? And he, that group has got that formulation and the expertise to actually calculate what the difference would be.
Yeah. The discussion along that subject, the greater the flow over the dam, the more water that's going over the dam, the greater the curve, which makes sense as well.
Gut level, that makes sense.
And they do have a formula to describe that.
Right, right. So, and they would be able to answer within that caveat, this much flow would be this much difference, this much flow would be that much difference, that kind of thing. And I'm not so sure that it would be a half inch. Just kind of remembering. But of course, the Glen Lake Dam is a lot different than our dam. But anyway, really nice. Appreciate your word. That's outstanding. Any other comments or questions with regard to sensors and staff gauges? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, outstanding. Now we're down to the procedures manual. Gars put a lot of work in and organizing, and the latest and greatest is in front of I guess what I would ask is, let's take some minutes just to kind of go through it and on our own, just to think and kind of click down. And then once we do that, we can think about what it is that we need to add to it.
A question about the actual winter and summer settings. What, what gauge do we use to officially establish those settings? Do we use the tube?
Yes.
The tube?
Yeah.
Okay.
The beauty of that is we can read it. And we, and as you had noted in your checks, it does match. And with the physical staff gauge in the winter being hard to read, that gives us the backup and the confidence that we are able to read the winter.
Yeah, I think the experiment that you did by closing the gates and measuring the elevation at the Narrows and at the dam indicates that at whatever flow was happening on February 14, there's about two inches ahead locks in the river between the south, between the lake, the Narrows, and the dam. So the Narrows elevation is going to be at that flow about two inches higher.
Yep.
But as I understand reading the court order, the elevation is measured at the dam.
Correct. So as, in a steady state situation, we read it and set it at the dam, and the level at the Narrows will be a little less than two inches higher.
Yep.
Because of the physical nature of where it is.
Yeah.
And we're a little bit stuck with that. The caveat there is, you know, where do we set the summer level? And last summer, for a while, we had it kind of at the upper edge of the two-inch window. And the caveat there was, we were conscious of the court order and felt that with the staff gauge being inaccurately at the Narrows, that we were physically carrying too little water according to the court order. So we went, we did that experiment. And in the fall, after our fall meeting or late summer meeting, we dropped the setting to just under the mid-stroke of the two-inch window. So at the dam, it was in the middle of the tube, a little less. And so that everything toned down a bit. We had a lot of water at South End. And we always will have more water in the South End, but carry an extra water in the system. Everybody in the South End noticed it on their beach, on their dock. So that was the other side of the coin from the river right here is that we're complaining about the level, not enough water in the system. So as we work our way toward our next meeting and we get into a full discussion at lake level as to where to set that dam reading, will be one of our most important topics, contentious. Well, I mean, we're kind of stuck. Yeah. And, you know, and the river people, the closer you are to the dam, the more difficult it is to be a river person when we have large events. So you have large events, and the only way to get water out of the lake is to go ahead and open and dump a lot of water. Otherwise, you're going to sit there for a really long time for the auto setting to get the lake back to court order. So that's, that's our conundrum. And if you're on the river and you open up the dam to dump water, the river level drops significantly. So that's, that puts the river people, you know, having to put up with that. And then the marina just upstream, they have to put up with that. And then the boats downstream, they have to put up with that. So that's a, that's a conundrum. All right. Excellent.
I have one more question on the procedures. Under the notes, based on these four different categories, the second through the fourth, the check at the Narrows is part of the decision-making process. Do, because the staff gauge and the electronic sensor agree, can we just use the electronic sensor rather than the staff gauge for those readings?
Is this reference to a comment? Or is this going to be a new? Is this on the sheet? Or is it on what you presented?
The dam procedure document.
So, so with that, are you proposing, say, a new line under notes?
No, just, it's just a question. What readings do we use in item situation three or four? We adjust the dam once the Narrows level drops. Do we just look, just check the electronic sensor?
I, that's a decision we can make, but if we have confidence in the electronic sensor, I don't see why not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, it would say, I think we should put, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would just say that travel time to go out and check and come back.
Making notes. Actually, when you're looking at two, three, and four, especially three and four, and one of the things that I was wondering about as far as procedure, and probably should be spelled out, and maybe it is here and I didn't see it, but sensor check, and that would be frequency and when. And then camera check, frequency and when. And then physical site visit check, when and how often. So, you know, if we've got an event, I think it behooves our operator to do a physical check. And if our operator's doing a physical check of the situation to make sure that, okay, this looks good, he can see it by camera, he can see by sensor that things are good. But at some point, a physical check is needed, and probably soon in the event versus later in the event. So if he's doing the physical check on the way back, pulls the truck over, walks along the guardrail, puts the field glasses on the staff gauge at the Narrows. It would take, I don't like them, I don't know how many times, but we had five yesterday, ten at the most. And in my mind, an early physical staff gauge check, I think, would be important. And I don't, it's pretty easy just to start looking at the sensors and the cameras, and it's important to just do that. And maybe that's on a pretty frequent event, a pretty frequent time, and then especially with events, you know, to be really monitoring closely. It's pretty easy to, a couple clicks on the computer, and you're looking with the camera, and you're looking, you know, there's water dumping, and there's what it looks like in the, in the control room. I got a good look at the level on the tube. You know, things are looking good there. And then the sensors. And then at some point, though, physically being there is important too. So I think it needs to be in the procedure. I don't, I don't know when, but...
The Lake Association have, has volunteers that are willing to read some of the gauges on a periodic basis. If we did that once a month and over a period of many months get confidence, I think that'll help us maybe avoid checking the physical staff gauge.
Right. And then, I'm just referring to the one in the dam.
Okay.
You know, that's physically go to the dam, not physically drive to South End. You know, that's the one I really want confidence in because that's a long trip. And even stopping at the Narrows. But I know, I mean, the caveat, you know, if you physically see... see the dam and you physically see the level at the narrows, that's what Jerry's been doing for 40 years.
Yeah.
You know, so I think keeping that routine and aspect is important in some frequency. Anyway.
I was curious about the, on the events two, three, and four, how the elevation at the dam is the same and didn't know if for like four especially, if it should be any lower than that or is that just enough open to get water out quickly?
Great question. Yeah, we've, when you go to manual, which we have a, a major event, what we'll need to do at a certain point is to open up and once we open up and start dumping more water, those, those readings will change. And it just depends on how open the dam is as to how much the change is. You know, if you go, say, number two, we're on auto, you know, and this is, we had an event in the fall and Jerry was, I think, downstate on his way back or some, he was away from the situation and I called Dwayne and I said, okay, we better check. And he went and checked and the auto was functional and it would be like a number two event. The event we had was more like a number three event, but he went and checked and the auto had kept that level reading the same, but to keep that level reading the same with that much extra water, the dam was significantly open. So he went and he said, yeah, the dam was just dumping a whole bunch of water. I think we're good for now. And so we just hung tight until Jerry got back to the situation and he did the check and he realized that it was four in the three range and went manual and opened it up significantly. And the reasoning for that is that if you don't do that, south end goes up, whatever the inches are in the range, whatever range we have, be it three inches, four inches, five inches, eight inches, whatever it is, south end goes up that much, period. They're, they're eight inches higher right away. I mean, it doesn't take too long and that water's there. And if we're taking it out with the dam, by the teaspoon, they're going to have eight inches of water for a month. So what that means in the three and four is that we've got to open up the dam, let a lot of water out so that the south enders get relief from their flooding, north enders to a lesser degree, and the river people have to deal with the fluctuation and the bigger events. And then there again, that narrows level is the key element there because we know, according to the court order, when we're in steady state, the dam says this and the lake level's an inch and a half to two higher. So when that narrow stage comes down to what the steady state is for the court order, when it's approaching that, we know that we can start to pull up the dam and go to auto and south enders will still have extra water, but it is going out. So that whole thing requires these overall guidelines and also requires a bit of expertise for field.
So it's pretty fluid then, really? It, it just remains fluid, those last ones?
Oh.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you get to the number four and, you know, you're, you're looking at the narrows and you're looking at the dam and you're, you know, at some points in time, Jerry would be doing a larger opening at night and a smaller opening during the day to allow the marina and the boats below to function. And that's, you know, that probably will appear in some of the procedural pages, you know, as we make notes as to what you might see. And I think in the future, this coming year, Jerry and Dwayne will be a little more hooked to the hip and Jerry will be doing stuff and Dwayne will be watching it. And so Dwayne gets a feel for, when do I have to open that up and dump a little more water? That's, that's, right, Jerry? Yeah. Yeah, that's, because I think, I think Jerry and I are going to retire at some point. I'm not going that far. And anyway. I, I was looking, I was looking at lake level and I, I see Garth, we have 589.10 and the court order is .21. And, but we haven't set the summer level yet, so.
That's essentially a place marker until.
We put something in there, yeah. I was kind of just, just for the sake of speaking, thinking aloud, if we put the court order 589.21 and then underneath it minus two or minus 1.34 or whatever, or minus, whatever the level is that we decide summer level's going to be, it'll be the court order minus whatever we decide. And, because we have the key, we have the capability to go minus two.
You know, there's a lot, a lot more we can add, obviously, to, to dam procedures, but this, I think, is a starting point that we can work from.
So I think, I'll charge everybody to take this document with you and between now and the next meeting, get out a sheet of paper and jot down your craziest ideas, all of them, as to what we need to possibly add to our procedures manual. And some of it might be a little open-ended as far as trying to capture some more things that Jerry might be doing this coming season. I, I kind of view the procedures manual as a living document. We have guidelines, we have these, this is what you might see and then on any given year, oh, we saw something else and add it to it. This is what we did when this happened, kind of thing. Any other comments on the procedure piece? So we should set a date, I guess. Where are we in the agenda? That's pretty much it, isn't it? Any other comments as far as action items or overall comments before we get to public Are you going to, are you going to do public?
Yeah.
All right. We're at public comment. Identify yourself, sir. Identify yourself, sir.
My name is Jerry Colvin. Talking to Pat Duchesne, just so you're aware, John, you questioned whether or not he can, can hydraulics and he does. He's, that's all part of his gene program. So I've been in touch with him and he's open to phone call. And he's in, March, March 4th, he'll be back or he's on vacation right now. So if you want to contact him, it's your call, whatever you decide. And.
He's on vacation, March 4th, huh?
No, he'll be back March 4th.
Back on March 4th.
Yeah, so contact him. But yeah, he does hydraulics too, just so you guys know, you know, won't stop shopping. So whatever decides, you know, who makes up the here and now, once people should have done the operation, then we've got to go back and revisit it for whatever it is. I won't be in there, but everybody knows the guy. So the other thing is, I hope the board decides to use John and Don Colvin's, we come up with, we all come up with vital, you know, whoever you hire, whoever comes up with the scope of work and things, we've done an hydraulic system that we've got two people that can ask questions and look at it before making decisions to, wouldn't that be in the court, right? We are, am I, on the paper? Really? Really?
No, not on paper.
Okay, so I would like to see that happen because we've got two people that, you know, we don't have to pay, we're willing to give up their time, we have the knowledge for going to the county board. I know you guys know that, I just want to agree with that idea. We've got, they're there to help us. And John, and Don, I think.
Don.
John Colvin's in general. So that's my public comment. Thank you very often. This season, everything's on manual right now, not in, I don't know if you mentioned that, the LC's down. Proceeds is working on that to replace the computer cord in that unit, so we're at, you know, winter level, air lines and everything, status quo, this way. We're going to have, possibly, seeing that chart, John, too, regarding, could be a real challenge this year, one that none of us are, I don't know, with weather, lack of, lack of, long period, no moisture runoff, so I don't know, we'll see how it goes, it could get really, we don't work. I would like to keep some water going over the dam just for noise control and whatnot, shut that thing off. Weight, too, I don't know if we have to, those things are kind of near the plate, see, you know, definitely maybe a rip in weight. So that's kind of where we're at, so just so you know, being watched closely. None of us are.
Yeah.
Till we see this year.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? John, we saw you already.
You knocked me up. You know, when we lifted that gate up and stopped the flow in the river and how the stuff was all in line and accurate, that's a good way to state how we can meet the court order when measuring at the dam. Meaning, we can measure that lake level, bring that dam up for a while. During any type of flow, that isn't a correct lake level. It's a good tool for Jerry to control water flows. So if we have this procedure, then we can say, once a month, do this. And Rick had a bunch of questions, what should we be doing, how often should we do it, how often should we calibrate it? That's in that procedure. What, what was drafted here is a good way to operate the dam gate and stuff, but we still made a procedure. I don't think you made a decision in number five. You can't just, you can't just meet every month or so and say, where are we on that procedure? We've been talking the same stuff we've just talked for the last 20 years. Which we put it, which we measure. I think Rick and Garth can get together and come up with a procedure and choose the stuff in it and have it ready for the next meeting, have everybody go away and say, come back with suggestions. You can't write a procedure from this bench, no longer. County commissioners can run their whole darn county from the bench. They, they don't have, they don't have all the skills to do it and it changes very often. So my recommendation is to write this thing and then bring it back and put it in front of everybody. Garth, that's a good start. You just can't keep going on for weeks. It's very frustrating. That one piston that operates, you mentioned they're a 200-year event. We have one foot of water about every 10 years and we've got to make sure that we know that even, even a 10-year event, we have one foot of water here twice in a long, two-year period, at that gate. And Jerry lowers it all the way to let all this water out. Maybe he doesn't pour it all the way, I don't know, but. Like, we have all that water we had here a couple summers ago. I don't know if we ever lowered that all the way, but if we did and it's all the way down and our lake is a foot high, we just got to move that one piston, we're not able to lift it up. It's not just a 200-year event like the engineer, design engineer. You guys need a procedure. This is a start, you need a procedure. How often do you do it? How often are you going to calibrate? How often are you going to read it? How often are we going to do this? How often are we going to lift the gate and test it? Garth brought up some real good stuff. How often do you test a generator and all that? Can't just put it on one page, but my good Chris. It's frustrating.
Thank you, John. I'll start with commissioner comments. Yeah, I had talked with Jerry and I neglected to get it into the agenda, but our little computer there in the patrol room went south and Jerry automatically contacted the person that will have his name in our procedures and he has the name and number down in the control room. But, so that's being looked at. I encouraged Jerry to go ahead and do the upgrade rather than trying to patch together something to keep the thing going, so to speak. So anyway, that's being looked at. Sorry for not having that in the agenda, but that was Jerry got, got it in. And, and all these comments are good, you know, when do we do what? I think it's good. And that whole concept of lift up the dam and then set the lake level, that's not in the court order. The court order doesn't tell us to do that. And we can do that for testing purposes and checking purposes, but we need to be real careful if, if we were ever to consider using that as a technique. You know, if we do that, how would the river people end up? You know? So it's a good question. Having the whole order open, like reopened, is opening a can of worms that could go almost anywhere. Up in the interim, they opened it up and they went up two inches and then the other group of people didn't like it and then they opened it up and went down two inches from the original and nobody liked that either. So they, the third go, they put it right back where it was to start. So, yeah, that's all my comments. Anyone else have commissioner comments? We need to set a date before we adjourn. So county board meets on the 12th and the 19th, right, Allison? So we're starting to run into spring break. I know I'm leaving on the 3rd, be back on the 8th of April. Do, do we want to meet? Do we want to meet before the spring break realm, like in the last week of March? That'll be after the county board has made their decisions.
I'll be gone March 20th to about April 5th.
Till April 5th?
Yeah.
Should we meet? Wednesdays came to work, don't they? So the next...
April 10th.
So the April board meeting is the 9th, right, Allison?
Forgot my April calendar, but yes, it would be...
Second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday of April.
Is there... We're going to have our scope of work. But with this, we're going to be able to go out to bits. So the scope of work's going to be in, then we can go out to bits. It'll just be a matter of taking that scope and getting it through Mitten and out to bits. And then we'll do a standard timeframe for bid opening. So I don't know if there's a necessity for us to meet before the April 9th board meeting? Do we see a need for that? Or that would put us into April. We could get down, you know, we could get down into the week of April 15th or the week of April 22nd. The 17th or the 24th?
17th. Works for me.
I'm available on the 17th.
Works for me.
Okay. Allison?
Somebody should be able to be here, yeah.
And then the rooms open?
I'll verify it when I get back to the office. But everything should be available as far as I can tell.
Okay. Unless I'm missing something, I think we're going to be okay with that date because our EDS is going to get us...
17th.
17th of April.
10 o'clock. 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. 10 o'clock, yeah. Okay. Nice, good meeting, guys. And I'll just, I'll chip away at the EDS and I'll be in email contact with the committee folks. And if there's any need for another special meeting, I'll get in touch. But if not, the 17th will be our next meeting. And we'll come ready to hammer out the procedure and get that document to the point where we can approve it and have it, and it's a living document, and we can always tweak it. All right. I get your team to motion.
Move for adjournment.
Is there support?
Second. Support?
In favor.
Hi.
I'm being adjourned. Nice meeting, good meeting. Thanks for all the work.